Okay, let's continue our meeting, but we do need to do a roll call because we just finished our training. We've not done that yet. So Scott, would you be kind enough, Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. Heinz?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Ms. Lewis? Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we consider the consent agenda.
A second.
Second.
We've had this before us. We've hopefully looked at it beforehand. Do any of you have any questions? Hold the roll, please. Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Jody, we had a quick announcement from the League of Women Voters. Would you be so kind?
Sure. So because it's a work session tonight and we don't have public comments, the League of Women Voters asked us to please announce that on October 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock, there is a candidates night for Ohio House Representatives District 9, Cuyahoga County Council District 10. So please come out. It will be at the Cleveland Heights Community Center on Monticello Boulevard. I'm getting the, that was the announcement they wanted us to make. So please attend if you're available.
Let's move on to Building Services.
Well, we appreciate you allowing us, hopefully it's a short 10, 15-minute opportunity to request approval of use of permanent improvement funds to improve the kitchen at Monticello. Doug has put together a brief overview. That was put up on Board Docs, but if you want, he can run through that right now for you.
Okay. Great. So basically, this is a change order number five for Monticello, and this is, as Georgia mentioned, for the kitchen renovations. We had several bulletins and we've rolled them all up into one request. This request includes two new air handlers on the roof, which will basically provide separate services for the kitchen and for the cafeteria. Right now, there is one air handler that needs to be replaced. As we worked with Moody Nolan and Osborne, the recommendation was, you know, they call for different requirements. So this includes that change. This also includes the walk-in cooler. We did a lot of studies to relocate the cooler. By the time we had to build a pad, put in all the infrastructure, by the time they dismantled it and hauled it all the way over and put it all back together, it just wasn't, it wasn't cost prudent to do that. So we actually have an allowance in here to actually reinstall a walk-in cooler inside the kitchen. This also includes the kitchen modifications themselves, as well as the equipment. This basically covers the scope. And basically, this is for Monticello. It serves several different elementary schools, as well as Monticello. The kitchen really needs to be modified during the construction. We've gone back and forth while we have the team in place and while we have some actual other sources for the equipment. That's why we put this request this evening. I have a couple of quick photographs here to show the existing equipment. So when we get through with this, we'll have new equipment. There will also be some architectural modifications. So I'll go over that a little bit. This is the, we're going to have new ceilings. We'll have new floor finishes. We'll have new power and all the plumbing and HVAC associated with it. This shows the existing plan where, right now, we have kind of one serving line that goes through. And as we go through, we're going to, actually, it'll be separated. So it'll be a little nicer as the students walk through. They'll have a serving area. They'll be able to go ahead and pick the food that they want, and there'll be a better separation between the kitchen and the service area. And then also, this kind of shows all the new equipment that we have in place.
So Doug, will this layout ease? I hear sometimes the line gets pretty long.
It's created two lines.
Yeah, so they'll be able to get through quicker.
And I can't regurgitate what was going in each line, but AVI has designed where there's one line maybe for like hamburgers and something, and the other line will be for like pizzas that are created similar to, like the high school almost has two separate lines. This will be designed the same way.
So it'll speed kids through quicker.
It should, right. That's the goal.
Thank you.
As students come in and come through, then as George mentions, there's two checkout lines to be able to come through the door. So this is kind of optimizing the existing openings that we have in space. And then as far as a budget update, this really hasn't affected the budget at all. So there hasn't been any change since the last board presentation, but I had all that information submitted. If you have any questions, we can go with that.
So what I wanted to, since Doug did touch on it, so the original discussion was to try to reutilize the walk-in cooler freezer at Wiley, trying to save some money. And after we did look at it, it came up to $80,000-some thousand. Again, it was to dismantle the equipment. It would be four years old by the time it was, we were taking it apart. Had to have a pad port over at Monticello. And I think we were all shocked at the amount of money to do that. So we took a step back. We asked the company to give us a price to take the two units that are inside, so it wouldn't require any of the work on the outside, remove those, and then install in-kind the same size refrigerator and freezer walk-in. So it's, the cost of that now can be taken and purchased as equipment. So instead of it coming out of the permanent improvement budget, the freezer, $22,000, would be rolled into the rest of the equipment, which comes out of 006, and we would take that as out of the food service program. So it would eliminate a little of that burden off of permanent improvement budget. So that's why we decided to do that. Do you have any other que, I mean, we've talked about this in the past. This did go through the BAC. The BAC did present, I think, a summary. Debbie put that up for, and that was discussed at length, at least two sessions with the BAC.
So could you just remind everyone, how many schools, how many children are fed out of the Monticello kitchen?
So Monticello currently serves Boulevard, Noble, and Oxford and itself. And that's because of the proximity. And again, Heights High School is large enough to do all the schools in a district, but it's really, at this time, impractical, just because of the amount of staff we'd have to have in that kitchen operating and to service. And since we have Monticello and the location it's at, it's easy to do. It's a large enough kitchen to provide the food necessary to those three schools and serve itself.
And the high school then serves all?
The rest of the schools and itself.
The rest of the school district.
I think, doesn't the middle school serve Roxelle? Or am I wrong about that?
Well, it has, just because of the proximity. And it's a struggle. We've, where discussion has gone recently to, the winner is, it's a struggle because the carts come down the elevator when it was working, and you have to go through the ice and snow. And we're just discussing, is that the right thing to do? We may have it served by the high school also.
Got it.
But currently, you're right. Roxmid does take care of Roxelle.
So, you know, I just want to say that throughout the past six months, I cannot count how many times and ways George has tried to get the walk-in cooler from Heights Middle School. I thought he was going to strap it on his back at one point. And I have to give you great credit, my friend, because he just tried like the dickens to make that work. And then one of the things that I think is really commendable is he was, he also got to a point where he was willing to walk away. And in the end, I really think that when he got there, he did a great service to the district because by opening his mind and thinking outside of the path that he had been thinking for months and months, it appears to me that we've come up with a really good solution there at Monticello with new equipment that will not cost a whole lot more in the long run, but will be brand-new, and therefore, the life expectancy, I believe, we can expect will make up for the additional cost today. So it is genuinely, I think, an investment that will pay off rather quickly, this change. And I just, I give you a great deal of credit for fighting that battle as long as you did.
I appreciate that.
And George, I just have a question. Is there anything that we can do with that other cooler? Can we sell it? We don't know yet, possibly?
The, and the reason we sort of tried to force ourselves into this meeting that was not supposed to be ours, was the time to get this all accomplished. We need to give Turner direction, so there's still demolition that has to be done, and the demo's 99% completed. So we want to get this on their agenda. And what has to be done is there's, equipment that's currently in the kitchen has to come out. There's some of the pieces we are not replacing. It's very few, but I have to have those pulled out and saved. And then the pieces that we're pulling out, I have to sell quickly. I can unfortunately sell that one while it's still in use, but I would attempt to do, again, we've been very fortunate, I've been updating you on your weekly Board Docs and at least previously, that we currently have been successful at recouping $51,000 with items that were salvaged and we were going to scrap for scrap metal or so on. And I would do the same thing with this. And I've been told by different companies that kitchen equipment is, no matter what age it is, if you plug it in and it works, there's somebody that's going to want it. So my goal would be to try to sell it, if it's not needed, in the future of the building next door.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all the work that the Bond Accountability Commission has done reviewing this. I think it's really helped that the process, I think this is a little bit of a gray area because it's a new building, new work in the building. Does it come out of the bond issue or does it come out of PI? And we, it's good that we're utilizing the Bond Accountability, the back, to look at all these things, even though it's a little out of their scope. So it's, you know, because it's all interconnected. It just gives, I think, another layer of transparency. And their favorable response in doing this, I think, is really, I think it goes a long way in our decision-making.
Great.
Okay, so as far as process, so we have the report from the back. Was there going to be a presentation from back, or is the document the presentation?
The document was going to be their support.
So the only thing then we need is a motion to accept, and you're referring to this as a change order as opposed to a?
It is a change order. What we're going to do is take, instead of using bond money, we're going to take and allocate a line item that's going to be from permanent improvement budget. And then we're also going to allocate a line item from 006, which would be the equipment budget.
Okay.
That will account for the entire sum. Now, again, at the end of the day, if there's money left, we could put it back into the permanent improvement budget. But right now, we have to have the funds available to pay this.
Okay. And we're tracking, not to use a lot of our contingency thus far, although we've dug a little deep for one of the buildings.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I do see a couple of BAC members here. Is, I just want to make sure, did you, were you expecting to come up and present, or are you satisfied with being in the record?
I think most of what we would have presented was covered by Doug as to there's an efficiency of effort in doing it now. It's not coming out of the bond money, and it'll serve more than just the students of Monty with updating the kitchen and that. So we felt it was worthwhile to do it at this point in time.
And every opportunity that we have to say thank you to the members, to Mario and Debbie here tonight, to the members of the BAC. These are members of our community who come in as volunteers and bring their expertise in so many different areas that are relevant to this enormous project that we have underway. We're very, very grateful for your service. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I motion that we accept the change order as provided.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? It needs to be said that Malia is unable to join us tonight.
Yes.
She's, also sits with you on the Bond Accountability Commission, and she wanted to make sure, well, first of all, she's at a memorial service for a friend of hers that has passed. She obviously can't be here, but she really is in supportive of this particular issue and all over it. So would you call the roll, please? Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Do we have anything else this evening from Building Services?
No, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, George.
Thank you both.
She first.
Bob, you look different tonight.
That's because today is National Voter Registration Day, so happy National Voter Registration.
You wear it well.
So everybody can register to vote online. And that is not a paid endorsement from the League of Women Voters. But it could be.
It could be, and we'd love that.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello again.
Hello, hello. So I am in partial teacher mode, so there are some handouts that are coming around to you. You would pass those down, and there are some for those in the audience. They are, and we'll make sure that they are also posted to Board Docs so that viewing audience members can see them as well.
Can people in the audience hear Allison?
Can you turn the volume up for Allison? Oh, sorry. Just go screen turn it up. Okay. Okay. Is that better? Yeah. Okay.
I didn't know there was going to be math.
So, again, we appreciate the opportunity to come and present in front of you tonight. This is actually the first in a series of three data sessions that members of the Educational Services Team and I are going to have to explain and share our progress with you. This particular one, we're going to focus primarily on the 2018 State Report Card that was just released on September 13th. One of our common agreements as a team is that we don't start these conversations without having grounded them in the test or what it is that we're talking about, right? So where did this data come from? So I'd like you to take just a minute to read through the question. I'm not going to ask anyone to give me their exact answer, so you can exhale. So I feel like people have had an opportunity to read it. If we were working with classroom teachers, or I'll do it here with any group, my question would be, what was your approach to the problem? And we'd get some feedback of, well, I tried to do this, I tried to do that. Then the second question would be, what grade level do you think this question is used with? So we'll do a quick scan. Takers for third grade. Takers for fourth grade. Fifth grade. And a couple for fifth grade. Sixth grade. So this, this particular question, and I've stopped the questioning, so it is an elementary level question. It's actually for fourth graders. And we can see on the description that it's worth one possible point, but takes an extreme amount of time and focus and effort to earn that one point. So there are multiple ways to approach the problem. There are multiple correct answers to the problem, which is something that is a shift from what we know and understand as it relates to our state tests, or any test for that matter. There's usually, especially in the area of mathematics, there's a right answer and a wrong answer. So this one pushes kids to think beyond that. And so we're going to, if there aren't any immediate questions or responses about this particular question, we'll transition that into tonight's presentation.
I'd like to make one comment about this. I mean, you shared this with us in, I believe, one of our meetings, maybe with University Heights?
Yes, that was, yes.
And it was just hugely eye-opening. I had it in my briefcase the next morning. My daughter, who is a Heights alumni, she's a brainiac math nerd. Took her 20 minutes to figure this out.
And she's not in fourth grade.
She's not in fourth grade. No, not anymore. I mean, and we're just scratching our heads and just...
Well, thank you. When I think about, so approach, as a former secondary mathematics teacher, the approach I went for, or towards, like, an algebraic method for solving it, thinking it's a system of equations, and then I realized I didn't have enough information to set it up that way. So it really encourages a great dialogue. And again, it's not about a, like, one right or wrong answer. It's about being able to think through different approaches and different ways to go after the problem. So we like using that one. And that is what our state tests are, our State Report Card is based on, right? So the state looks at performance on these tests, along with a few other measures. And we are issued a report card once a year. There are six components on the State Report Card. So what I'm going to do for you this evening is go over those six components, looking at any new changes or things for 2018 that are new, and any highlights for the district. And as I said, this is part one of a three-part series. So we'll follow up with additional measures that we use here in Cleveland Heights, University Heights, to measure our success in addition to these measures. So whenever we look at any kind of data, it's important to put that information into context. And one of the practices that we use here is to go over or ask three different questions. So how do we perform compared to the goal? How do we perform compared to others? And how do we perform compared to ourselves over time? So you see the map of Ohio there. We're actually part of Region 3, which represents Cuyahoga County. And then within Cuyahoga County, there are a group of 16 districts who refer to themselves as the First Ring Districts, because we are the districts just outside of the city of Cleveland, or the Cleveland Municipal School District. So when we talk about, or look at comparing our performance to others, I'm going to show you how all 608 districts in the state performed, and then how the 16 First Ring districts perform. So who are those districts? Again, there are 16 of them. The ones highlighted in gold represent the districts that are on the east side, and those that are not highlighted are on the west side. So we have 10 districts on the east side and six on the west side. So again, we have six different components, but new for 2018 is that every school and district will receive an overall grade in addition to those six measured areas. And so what we have here is how those grades are calculated. So they're weighted. The two components that carry the most weight for that overall calculation are achievement and progress. And then the other four are each weighted at 15%. Now, when you have a school that does not use all six of the components, then the weighting is redistributed. So for example, at our middle school, they would only have measures for, or components of achievement, progress, and gap closing. So the weighting is distributed 34% for the achievement component, 34% for progress, and 31% for, or 32% for gap closing. When we look at the overall grade for the district, we earned a D. And the distribution of grades for the state, actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to pause for a moment. I'm going to give everybody a chance to look at the graphs and make sure that we're understanding what we're saying. So there are two charts here. The colored bars represent the grade level, or the grade earned. So there are five grades, A, B, C, D, and F, and they're represented by the different colors. So the darker green represents an A, the lighter green a B, the yellow a C, the orange a D, and the darker red an F. The height of the bar represents the percent of the districts that earned that particular grade. So when we're looking at the graph on the left, the yellow graph, or the yellow bar, 42% of the 608 districts in the state earned an overall grade of C. Then the table on the right is the, has the same breakdown, except it just represents the 16 districts for the First Ring.
Can we go back?
Yes.
I mean, we had some of this conversation with the City of Cleveland Heights, sharing these, you know, some basic information with the, with council members there. And I just want to make sure that everybody who's looking at this understands, this is not like you're going into a restaurant and you're looking at the health inspector reports in that restaurant getting an A, where you sort of expect, you walk into a restaurant, you really don't want to eat at an A restaurant, you don't want to eat at a B restaurant because there may be, you know, bugs in your food. But when you look at the fact that 5% out of 600-some districts, is it 22? Is that the number? I mean, I don't have the, can't do the math quick enough, I guess. I thought it was like 22 that got As.
It was like 22 or 23.
Yeah, that actually got As. I mean, I find it alarming that we are labeling buildings B, C, Ds, and Fs when only a small, small number, 20-some districts in the state are getting As.
So yes, so the number, that 5% represents 28 of the 608 school districts. And it is interesting to note that part of the state superintendent's comments in his 2018 School and District Report Card Results Summary, he even indicates that the report card tells us a story, and I encourage you to take a deeper look. And then he goes on to say that the report cards are not the only measure of success or accomplishments, and that visiting schools, talking to parents, students, teachers, and graduates can paint a more complete picture of the educational experience. So as they've, I think as the state has gone through and reviewed, they're slightly shifting their thoughts on the use of grade letters to describe performance. There's another diagram in the state's overview that talks about the tale of two districts, where they both have grades of, I believe that their example includes a C, but that when you look at the underlying components, there are still differences. And when we, and when the state made the move to letter grades, the rationale was, well, it's easier. Everybody understands a grade, and a C is a C, right? A B is a B. And now we're seeing that shift to say, well, not exactly, because it depends on how they perform on different components and the way that they're weighted, it could actually mean very different things. So that, again, that is explained in, those are his words, not mine, from the Ohio Department of Education School and District Results, which is available on their website. And I can also add it to Board Docs, so the audience members can see it as well.
So we, as board members, have always been very critical of the value of these grades. You know, not to throw cold water on maybe bigger thinkers in Columbus that want to mark these schools, but when you're a parent, you live in a community, especially a community that has a reasonably high tax burden, you expect your kids to go to an A school. You absolutely expect it. And we've talked about conspiracy theories and why these numbers are the way that they are, but, I mean, they're highly suspect when you look at these numbers. I mean, I mean, how can we find that this information is valuable? I mean, I mean, how, how can we find that this information is valuable? Except for the issue of we all need to do better at what we do. So yeah, so when you don't get an A, you all know that you need to do better. And we, we are working on so many things to make academic excellence and achievement better in this district. And I think when we move to some of the other, and I, and I know we've got other work, work sessions planned where we're gonna be talking about these alternative measurements, I mean, things that are important to us and our kids that are realistic. Because when a citizen looks at this, it's not a realistic measurement of the success that's going into our buildings and the scholarships and the graduation rates. And it's just so incredibly misleading.
Agreed. And I think an example of that is when we look at what is probably the most well-known component, and that is the achievement component. Again, when we look at the distribution of, of grades across the state, we see that the, the largest number of, or the greatest number of districts earned a grade of D. And you see the same thing happen in our First Ring districts. When we drill down further, so the achievement component is made up of two different measures, indicators met and performance index. Well, indicators met, it says, have eighty percent of the students in a grade level passed the test? Or are they proficient or higher? Performance index goes down a little bit further and it says, well, what was their exact performance level? You know, how well did they do across five different categories? When we look at our performance, again, thinking of those questions to putting the data in the context, when we look at our performance over time, we've improved in sixteen indicators compared to last year. And where we didn't improve, when you look at performance across the state, other districts didn't either. So I know it's rather, it might be a little challenging to see, but try to include visually. So each line there represents an indicator. So that's our performance over the last three years. Green arrow means our performance went up. A red arrow means it did not. So again, you see, we went up in sixteen areas. There were five areas that our performance dropped in. There were seven areas where the state dropped in performance. And our five are five of the seven where the state also dropped. So part of our work is looking at, why is that? You know, it, it's not isolated to Cleveland Heights, University Heights. It's not isolated to the First Ring districts. What happened? So we're looking at released test items. We're looking at the item analysis to figure out what's different. What are the different ways that we can approach the questions? Again, starting off meetings and sessions by looking at, at the work. And again, we're gonna talk about like our practices and procedures during the next two meetings. But I think that's an important thing for us to know and to understand. When we look at indicators, so the visually, our performance index, right? You can see a little bit better distribution for performance index. But when we look at indicators met and that grade level performance, if I can get it to proceed. Okay, there we go. We have multiple degrees and I can't get this to work. Okay. So the distribution of the grades for the state, seventy-two percent of the districts in the state earned an F for the indicator measure. When we isolate just to First Ring districts, all but one of us earned an F. That's not our kids. It's, it isn't. I refuse to believe that ninety-four percent of the kids in the First Ring districts are not meeting grade level expectations, that they're not proficient at each grade level.
Or that seventy-two percent in the state.
Correct.
In the entire state.
But if we don't take the time to look at it in different ways and look at it in context and to drill down, we might miss that part. When we only look at a ranking and, and think about, you know, the placement amongst those six hundred and eight districts, we might not see it.
I often think about it, you know, and I, I take the, the driver's test. Imagine if ninety-four percent of adults in the inner ring failed the driver's test. How long would it be before adults in the inner ring insisted on a new test? It would be a clear indication that there was something wrong with the test. Any teacher, if your child had a teacher that ninety-four percent of their class failed, you would insist that the teacher rethink the test. And yet, we are not given the same clear benefit that anyone would expect if this was a test being inflicted on adults.
Well, I used the word conspiracy theory earlier. And our board work, when it comes to advocacy and when we look at so many state regulations, I mean, it's, it's all about trying to drive kids out of the public schools and support the charter movement. I mean, and when we look at our bottom-line numbers, I mean, I know that's very difficult as educators for you, but as board members, when we see this, I mean, what, what's the rationale and the reason for it? You know, I'm not a big believer in conspiracy theories at all, but I mean, what else is it? I mean, it is, it's, it's crazy to make our public schools look so inefficient because they've gamed the system with these test scores.
So to, to add to the, the conspiracy, the Ohio Board, State Board of Education, which is the board, which is the body that adopts this, these tests. The State Board of Education consists of nineteen people. Eleven of those are elected by citizens in districts that are geographically clustered together. And eight of them are appointed by the governor. Governor Kasich has now appointed all eight of those. And in a body that is a total number of nineteen, you need just ten of those nineteen to adopt a resolution to accept a test. So Governor Kasich has not appointed a single Democrat in his entire tenure to the Ohio State Board of Education. And there are a few of those districts in southern Ohio who haven't elected anybody with a D next to their name in probably anyone's lifetime in this room. So it is a very stacked deck when it comes to districts like the inner ring.
Well, our governor's on the record saying that he likes this.
Yes.
He thinks that this, that these As and Bs are valuable. So that's, so of course he's gonna appoint people that are going to agree with that fact. I mean, that's the whole reason why he has the.
One of his first acts as governor was to dismiss Deb DeLisle, a former superintendent of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, who took a job in Columbus, to dismiss Deb DeLisle from her post as the state superintendent of schools.
So when we think about ways to advocate, the ways to make change, definitely elections matter. Knowing who the members of those board committees are matters and reaching out to them to express your concerns is very important. The second component is the progress component, and it looks at four different measures. And it answers the questions, did students meet expected growth? Now, we saw a huge shift in performance when the state changed testing vendors back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Our grades in this particular component went from all As to all Fs. Now, since two thousand fifteen, our performance has improved, but not enough to see the grades that we earned prior to the change.
Allison, I'd like to point out something too on the previous slide where it, the component grade, it's all students, gifted students, students with disabilities, and students whose academic performance is in the lowest twenty percent.
Yes.
If you're a gifted student, sometimes it's incredibly hard to grow on these tests. If you're already getting a nine, you're already in the ninety-ninth percentile, there is nowhere to grow. And that was something that was very frustrating for me when I was digging through the data because we do have some very highly gifted students, and I'm sure a lot of districts do. But when fifteen percent of that component is kids who, yes, you want them, you know, and I'm not saying that they can't grow in what they're learning. They're certainly growing what they're learning. But that growth is very, very difficult to measure on a test when you're already almost at a perfect score on the test.
Those students feel a great deal of weight because they have developed relationships with their teachers that mean so much to them. And these kids now know that their teachers, to some extent, are being evaluated by their performance on these tests. And so the kids come into school feeling a great deal of anxiety about, you know, can they perform to show their, to show what their teachers have brought to them?
And you'll see the use of, or disaggregating performance by student groups, like students with, gifted students or students with disabilities in multiple components. Like the next one here, which is gap closing. This actually comes from the federal accountability system. So when the federal government reauthorized the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, there were changes made to the gap closing measure to meet those new requirements. So here, we have four measures that our, that are, are included. We look at performance of student groups in the areas of English Language Arts, Mathematics, Graduation Rate. And then new this year, there's a specific measure related to English learners and how they have improved their English skills from one year to the next. And this particular, with this particular component, when we consider performance of ourselves over time compared to two thousand seventeen, our gap closing grade improved one letter grade. So we have shown improvement with this particular component. But what you aren't able to see is that with these four different areas, in English Language Arts, we earned one hundred points, which is actually the maximum number of points possible. So not only did we improve, but we earned the, the highest number of points for that particular measure. In the area of Mathematics, we earned eighty-one out of the one hundred possible points. So our performance in those two areas is the best that it's been. You know, and if you translate it or, or, or think about what that might look like at a classroom level, a hundred percent, A, eighty-one, B. With the other two measures, however, and in particular the English learner measure, this one was introduced this year and we didn't know how it was calculated until after the decision had been made. And the, the report cards, they weren't officially printed, but the measure had already been calculated. So, you know, now that we know what's involved in that calculation, we're in a better position to even, to address it. And that's not about gaming the system. That's just understanding what's involved in the calculation. You know, there's no doubt that we won't be able to improve on that in the same way that we have in the area of English Language Arts and Mathematics.
As long as they measure it the same way next year.
Well, that is a, a, a big as long as, but I can only function within, in the right now. One other point to consider when we think about gap closing is that because this looks at performance with respect to specific student groups, and again, that's, we look at different races. We look at students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, students with disabilities. A school in it, or a district has to have a certain number of students in each group for it to even be included. So some districts, some schools, the, like the English learners measure, for example, is not included in their calculation because they don't have a student population large enough for it to be included. So while it's not a First Ring district, Beechwood happens to be one of those schools. So they don't have an English learner measure because they don't have enough students in that population for it to be included.
So can I ask, what, what defines a student as an English learner?
So that is based on a screener that students, or that, that students and families participate when they enroll into school. And the score that they earn on that particular screener determines their level of English proficiency. So really oversimplifying it, let's say I, a student comes in and there are four different levels, one, two, three, four, with four, one being the lowest and four being the highest. Let's say I come in and my initial screener is at a, a, a level one. Then I would receive services from the district. And then during the school year, I take was the state test, which is called the OALPA. And it's Ohio English Learner Proficiency Assessment. Get caught up in the acronyms sometimes. And they assess students on their ability to speak the language, write the language, and answer and respond to questions written in English. So each one of those areas earns a score and then that score is, then they take the test again in the following year. And if they've improved in all four of those areas, then that's what is used for the English learner calculation.
And so are all those students, students who are, who a different language is spoken at home? Or can a, a, a child come to us whose family has been here for generations but who has, hasn't acquired the language as well as would be expected?
So one of the flags for taking the screener is whether or not the student is new to the United States. But then the, the primary language spoken at home is also taken into consideration.
And do kids get out of that once they're in?
Yes, the, the process is that they can be exited out of that status when they have acquired a certain level of English proficiency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on two core issues, we're off the charts or we're a hundred percent. So it comes down to graduation rate. And we know that many kids feel like when they're entering high school that Cleveland Heights is gonna be a great experience for them. And they come in, they're coming from other districts, and we know they're not quite prepared. We know it takes a little longer to get them through, but they get through. Basically, the difference between the four-year and the five-year graduation rate, and I know you'll, you'll, you'll touch on that. So we're, in a sense, from a, from, from just a test score perspective, we're penalized because of that. And we're penalized with English learners because when you look at, you know, districts like Beechwood and when they're totally exempt and we're not, I mean, is this really, is this an, I mean, are we, we finding that districts that are highly urban are not exempt versus more of the suburban ones are? I mean, is there, it seems a little discriminatory.
I haven't looked at it in detail enough to be able to make the broad statement that it's an urban issue, you know, and, and not a suburban issue or, you know, that they, that we don't see the same things in, in more rural areas. And, and just as an aside, as someone who grew up and went to Cleveland Heights, University Heights schools, our diversity is one of our greatest strengths. And so, you know, whether we take a knock for, loose language, whether we take a knock for our student population or not, it's one of the greatest parts about being in this community and being able to attend our schools. And, and for graduation rate, the, I didn't mention it, but we also showed improvement in that, in that measure as well. So, so we seen our highest performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics. I'm, I, I only have two years in front of me, so I can't say with one hundred percent certainty with graduation rate as well. But we did see improvement from seventeen to eighteen in the area of graduation rate. Can give you performance over time with EL and that, and that measure because it's brand new. But again, one of the important things is being able to, you know, like I know, I now know and understand what's used for that calculation. And so I can talk about it. I can help our teachers understand. I can help our parents understand. And when they take this test, so for the EL measure in particular, students are assessed using a different test. So thank you, Dan, for bringing that up. So, so their performance as measured here is not based on the Ohio State test. It's based on their performance on the language proficiency test. So this is another test that this group of students must take that's included in the, in the component.
So it appears that you're penalized for being diverse and you benefit from having a very homogeneous student population.
Those values are not included, yes.
That's what it looks like from this.
Homogeneous grouping, yes.
And stoking the conspiracy theory fire. I mean, we know that the charter. I mean, we know that the charter schools prey on families that are in highly urban areas. You know, I think, you know, this is really, you know, the role of Dr. Dixon and, and your team. And, and I know we have to address these issues. And academic achievement is just so incredibly important. You know, I'm going a little rogue here, but I mean, if we are not, if it takes us a significant amount of effort or if it's because we have to pull a kid out of band or music just to score a point higher in a state test that frankly, isn't providing any value to anybody, I'd much rather see our kid doing something like music or the arts or robotics club or something that is truly valuable or our CTE programs as opposed to trying to cater for a test that we already know is suspect when it comes to really its, its true value.
And, and tagging on with that, you know, in, in, in the current environment where, you know, 2018 America, where someone was laughed at on the floor of the United Nations today, our, this community's strength for 40 years has been, and, and beyond, has been welcoming people from all over the world and helping their kids join this society. And I, we, we celebrate this, this is who we are, this is what we are. And now more, now more than ever, I think that that is an important thing for us to hang our hat on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just got to say it. I don't think anyone in this room could name a single employer or a single college who looks at what you get on the state test and makes a decision based on that as an individual. Name me one person who got a job or got into a college based on what they scored on a state test, no one.
Well, and some of the more select schools are even abandoning any kind of SAT or ACT scores. And some of the premier prep schools in this city are completely banning letter grades altogether. I mean, schools like Hoggan, for example, it's their goal to get rid of letter grades because they just don't see the value. I mean, I, and I'm, and I'm, I'm saying this not because we want to, you know, you know, hide behind a poor score on a state, state test. I mean, we need to look at analytics and important measurements to make sure our kids are thriving, they're being challenged, we need to make sure our staff is doing that work. I mean, so as far as, you know, an executive in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, I'm, I'm trying to say business, it's, it's not a business, but I mean, our business is education. We need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to deal with student achievement. I'm just, this can't be the right measure, though.
Well, and so it is important, again, going back to Dan's comment, that we understand who makes these decisions and that we share our thoughts and concerns with them. I mean, both or all three of the districts that are, excuse me, look how's the cities that feed into our district are all about community engagement. We have our coalition that meets regularly to try to inform the communities about what's happening at the state and federal level as it relates to education. And, and who, the people in those positions matters. Because while we, we disagree with how the scores are used and maybe some of the test questions and the amount of pressure it puts on our kids, it's making the difference between whether or not they, our, our kids earn high school diplomas. And so it is, it is quite the balancing act. And again, part of, of sharing the, the data under the data is to encourage all of us to continue to advocate and speak up and speak out. Because some of our kids who are caught in the right now may not graduate. They may not even get to the point where they're in front of an employer or they're in front of a college recruiter to say, these were the scores I received on my, on, on, on my test because they can't graduate. So it is something else that we're, we're, we're working through. And why informing our community to encourage them to connect with our state legislators and our, our state board members is absolutely critical.
And we should remember to give them their report card on November 6th.
Elections matter.
So another component is the Prepared for Success component. And this impacts our high school students and staff. It looks at performance of students on our college readiness exams of the ACT and the SAT, the number of students who earn honors diplomas or earned an industry-recognized credential. We can earn additional points for students who earn three or higher on AP exams or who earn at least three dual enrollment credits. So when we compare our performance to other districts across the state, we can see that just over 50% of the districts are in the F range. And this is an F, or a, a drop in state performance. So when we consider performance over time, it's shifting to the lower grades. Because in 2017, a majority of the district grades were in the D range. So again, something's happening there, not unique to Cleveland Heights University Heights, but across the state, where we're not seeing performance in this particular component go up. Actually, I take that back. We are seeing an improvement in our overall points earned and our overall percentage. But in terms of the letter grade across the state, it's dropped for many districts. The fifth, I believe it's, yes, the fifth component out of the six is an older component with a new name. So it used to be referred to the K3 Literacy Component. And they have shifted the name or changed the name to Improving at-Risk K3 Readers' Component. So it looks at how successful schools are at getting their most struggling readers on track to proficiency. So this particular component is, is calculated based on how students do on two tests. So the beginning of each year, students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade are given a reading diagnostic test. And based on the performance on that test, they're given what's called a reading status. They're either on track or they're not on track. So kindergarten or beginning of the year, I take my assessment, I'm on track. Year goes by, I'm now a first grader, I take a different assessment, but still a reading diagnostic, so it measures different things than what I was tested on in kindergarten. And again, I'm giving the status, am I on track or am I not on track? Well, because I'm on track, I take the test again, you'll say, I'm, I'm on track again. I never show up in this component. Bob over here, though. We're in the same class. And when he was in kindergarten, he was not on track. I tried to help him, no. Owned me to make light of it, but, right, just to give you the example. So kindergarten, he was not on track. First grade, right? He moves to on track. Of course, just took him a little bit longer.
Not a race.
So, so Bob will appear in this measure. Because he started off as not on track. And so what they're, what we're looking at in the calculation is, how many Bobs moved from not on track to on track? So somewhat deceiving, because when you look at it, especially with the old name, you think, what? 34% of your stu-, your third graders who are, are not reading, again, because of the name. So in some respects, I appreciate the name change. But until you drill down, you don't see that over 70% of our students are on track. Right? So we're talking about a, a, a subgroup of the overall population that's included in the, in the measurement.
So you're saying the on-track students are not measured?
Correct. They're not included in this component, they're not reflected in the measure.
And it's also worth pointing out that something like literacy is so closely related to brain development. And, and some kids are just not there. There is a variety of times when kids' brains are ready to take the, the literacy jump. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything to really even worry about with those kids. They're just late-reading bloomers. And by the time they're in fifth grade, they're very often right there with their peers.
And we had an unbelievable conversation just this, just this morning with what we call our, our English Language Arts lead teachers. So they work with staff and students at each one of our seven elementary schools. And we were, actually, we went through every single first grader and their, their reading diagnostic results. And the best part of that conversation is that no matter what the student's reading status was or the overall composite grade that they earned on the test, those teacher leaders knew exactly what skills needed to be worked on to meet the needs of all of those students. So those who were not on track and those who were on track. Because sometimes even our students who are on track still need assistance with specific areas. And so again, not being included in the measure, not that I want to add anything else to the, to the component, but it's just that there's a, there's, you know, we're zoomed in here when the picture is really much, much larger and much broader. So again, I'm, I, I get excited about that part because that's, that's the, the benefit of, of the, the components is being able to dialogue with staff and in, in some respects with the, our high school kids and some of our middle school kids about their performance and what it means and what they know and what they still need to learn. So again, that's going to come up in part two and three of the series. Just wanted to make sure that we had the initial conversation about our district report card and, and again, comparing our performance to other districts and being able to look at some of our improvements.
It's also a real celebration of how, how well our teachers know their kids.
Ooh, it was awesome. It was really awesome. So our final component is the graduation rate component. And this includes two measures. So students who graduate in four years and students who graduate in five years. It's important to note with this particular component that it uses, or it's calculated using the cohort model. So when we think graduation rate, you might be thinking, oh, well, the students who just graduated this past June, which we refer to as the class of 2018, but it actually isn't. It's, it's a year to two years behind. So the, it actually represents the classes of 2016 and the classes of 2017. And again, we can see our four-year rate, we've earned a C, and our five-year rate, we've earned a B. Considering performance over time, it's remained, remained the same for each one of those areas. And then here, where we see performance across the state skewed differently, right? It's, it's, we have more districts across the state that have As. And then we see a kind of a shift in that performance when we look at first ring districts. And, and so again, because we're looking at 2016, 2017, we have not yet seen the impact of the Ohio State Tests and what, and how that impacts our graduation rate.
So Allison, when you've done this presentation before and you, you basically said, hey, look, the graduation rate isn't the current kids', it's the kids a couple of years back. You know, okay, so I sort of tuck it away, but I, I, I'm not going to put you on the spot. So in a future meeting, would you just tell us what's, why do they do that when they already have the data?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'd be real curious, I mean, why? And why do they think that would be helpful to go two years back when the measurement is current? Because I, 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 I just don't get that.
We will come back and talk about it in, in greater detail. The short answer, though, is because things like summer graduates are included in the calculation. And so many districts, like our graduation, I believe, was like in that first week of August. Well, state law requires that the Ohio Department of Education publishes the state report cards within, I believe it's 45 days after the last test administration. So we wouldn't be able to include those summer graduates in our overall graduation total, even though they're part of the current year cohort. We'll go over it in detail, but that's just the, the, the quick and dirty of it is we actually get to include more graduates when we have additional time.
It's so impressive to me, by the way, that you can just pull that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, we, we, we all have our strengths. You know, gift and a curse. So just in, in closing, I'm going to remind you that this is part one of, of three conversations that we're going to have. And then the next two, we're going to focus more on our internal measures and make those connections to what we celebrate and what improvements we've seen over the last few years. And I know I started with this, but I do want to read it again because I think it's a, it's a, it's a powerful statement. So again, this comes from the Superintendent of Instruction for the Ohio Department of Education. He says, "The report cards tell us a story, and I encourage you to take a deeper look at your district's or school's results. Each school has its own strengths and weaknesses, and the report cards help us have important discussions about them. Remember, though, that report cards are not the only measure of the success or accomplishments of a school or district. Visiting schools and talking to parents, students, teachers, and graduates can paint a more complete picture of the educational experience." So we can't forget that. It's not one or the other, it's an and. And we'll get to share more of that with you in future sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for sharing this with us because every time you give us one of these presentations, I learn so much. And, and I learn how convoluted and messed up the state report card is. But at least now, when somebody gets in my face, which will happen, you know, when I'm at the grocery store or something, I have information and I can help educate them. And often when I bring out things like the English learner and start discussing that, if I, you know, now that I'm educated on that, it does open their eyes. And if you didn't come and bring us this kind of information, we wouldn't be able to do that. So thank you, I really appreciate the time and effort it takes for you to put these presentations together and share them with us.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. And while I am the, the, the person up here speaking and I get to rattle off some of the numbers, I am part of, of a team, right? And so we all contribute to, to this work in, in different ways. So it's not just me, it's the entire team. And they're sitting up here with me and then in the back over there too, so. So we, we appreciate that, thank you.
So when are we scheduled for these other two meetings?
I'll make sure your, your calendars are updated Friday. But I think it's one in, I know it's one in January, and I think it's one in March. But they're on the calendar, but I'll make sure you have the dates.
Yeah.
So, you know, the word on the street is our communications department is kicking shaker's butt when it comes to materials and signs and building excitement and stuff. But one thing that they have, it is true. But, but one of the things they have consistently done as far as set expectations in their community is annually publishing this thing called Measurements That Matter. I mean, it's a brilliant set of words, but, you know, measurements that matter to their community. And I'm really, really excited to see that, you know, we are working towards sort of our version of that to a certain extent. I know there's a lot of steps that's going to take us to get there, like really, what's the ideal Cleveland Heitzer? I mean, what, what's their makeup, what do they look like? I mean, you know, there, there's a music piece, but I mean, there, there's still numbers that we need to look at. I'm real looking forward to these next presentations. And, you know, we do board meetings where it's, it's really pretty dry sometimes, but.
You've noticed.
Sorry. But this is the kind of stuff that, I mean, needs to be, you know, bottled and YouTube'd and liked on all social media so people really understand it.
Agree, but I think that was the, the reason the board wanted to have a series of these data discussions. So now we saw this stuff. So I think it's important for us to, we see it, we understand it, now let's put it away. And the next two series are going to talk about what we do well. And then how the assessments that we have, how it informs what we do. And so when you hear people talk about that we're, whatever test that we're giving, you know what that test is measuring and how it informs and maybe some correlation back to some of the, the state tests. But, so when you talk about measuring what matters. But, so when you talk about measuring what matters, um, we're deciding, because remember the assessments that we give are decided by us. So they have teams of staff that are working with Allison. And, and they're saying, okay, we don't want these 100 assessments, we want these 50 because these 50 tell us this. So those, um, additional sessions are going to tell us what are we learning from those assessments that we're given. And then that you have some information too, so when, um, when asked, are we overtesting students? And we would say that we're measuring, we're getting information from our, um, our, uh, our assessments, if they are, uh, are formative assessments that we've chosen to give to inform us on how to instruct students better or differently. So, um, they're our assessments chosen by us. And so I think that's going to be a powerful way for you to learn that too, because we're doing some amazing things in this district. And I don't think we've been doing, um, with Scott at the helm, we've been doing a, a great job sharing that. But I think there's so much more to, to share. Yep.
We're not going, we're not going to have an intermission between the, between the two.
Do you need an intermission?
Well.
You're the president. Do you need an intermission?
Well, I think.
You've got the gavel, Jim.
I think we need to acknowledge all the excellent things you've done for us. And, um, thank you for your service. I mean, there's a, a true evil rumor out there that you're going to Columbus. Which we know is true. And we, and, and, and we've issued some, some press releases. But I want the community, and I'm going to touch on that in a sec. You know, when we do these presentations and we look at the strategic plan, and we look at the wonderful things that your team is doing, and our commitment as a board to continue that work with your absence. I just want everybody to, to really keep an eye on, you know, look at the strategic plan, and it's not going away. But about you going to Columbus, we want to wish you so well. This is so deserving for your career. It really sucks for us, but it's going to be okay because you've put these great tools in place, we've got a great team. And you know, teams change. But this is a great thing for you, and we're going to be so sad that you're going to be gone. We're so thrilled we've got to the end of the school year. And we've got a good remaining team. But really good luck with everything. And we will be celebrating this at the end of the year.
At the end of the year. Got a lot more work to do before then.
We as a board are, um, having a special meeting on October 9th. It's between our regular meeting and our work session, where we've invited the OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association, to bring, um, an expert in to help us look at the processes in finding another superintendent. So we are beginning that process. We expect that's going to, I mean, we, we have no idea how it's going to pan out. We are missing a board member, so I really absolutely don't want to talk about process without Malia. But, um, we're going to begin work, working on this immediately, so there's some reasonable transition plan. So we're getting going. And do you guys have anything to say, I think?
Echo what you've said and, and how, how grateful this community is. And we've, we've talked about how much communication we've all received. About just celebrating what you have brought to our students and to our community. And so incredibly grateful and proud, to be honest with you. Proud that, um, you have captained our ship for, for these years. And I am also very, very grateful and comforted with the knowledge that you will be involved in, you know, helping us, uh, you know, through this process of finding somebody to occupy the chair. So that, that means your, your being here for that transition also means a great deal.
Yeah, I believe it's bittersweet for all of us.
No, we're going to do this every meeting.
Yeah, but, um, just, I mean, you have just did some phenomenal things in your four years here. I think Jim and I came on board with you. And I just, I've seen what the change that you have made in this district. And we're going to miss you.
Yeah, and I think it really is amazing. Jim said this last night at the joint meeting, but a district ten times the size of ours is poaching our superintendent. It's pretty validating for the stuff that you've brought to our district and what we've been working on and what your team has been working on. I mean, it clearly indicates to me that we're working on the right things. The largest school district in the state wants our superintendent.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
Thank you. Um, okay.
Intermission over?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but thank you. We have a, these people back here and here, they, 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 they make, you know, they make your job better and easier because they have the expertise. And so you just are, um, in a position where you can, can help lead the people who have the expertise to do the work and do it well. So, um, I'm going to get you, Jim. So it's been a privilege to, um, be in a, um, a district who's been accepting of my leadership style. And, um, because I think we all have our own leadership styles and our way that we do things. And I think we, um, what I've tried to, to keep in my forefront my entire career are students. And, um, if anybody says anything about Talisa, I think they could say Talisa's always been student focused, always. Because, um, that's why we're here, and that's why we do this work. And that's why, um, it's important that we do the work, um, from our hearts and we do it well. And we continue to improve because the students deserve it. And if, um, my talents can help kids at that level, then it's a humbling experience for me to even, um, even been considered. So, um, thank you. We still have, I'm committed to being here. That's why I told them not to leave in January. Crazy. Uh, we got more work to do. We got a, um, we got some good work happening, some good things that are happening. And some, um, some fantastic people who are leading it. A community who has embraced the work and kids who deserve it. So with that, let's transition to our summer school programming update, please. And, um, as Allison stated, um, uh, uh, earlier, how we can, um, how it's important that, um, when we look at our summer graduates, I think it's important that we build, uh, uh, summer enrichment programs as well as, um, um, remediation programs, but more enrichment than remedial programs. And, um, want to take a little time tonight just to talk about those summer programs and some of the results that we've seen. And I know we don't have a lot of time, but I would like for Felicia and, and Paul and the team to kind of talk about that, please. I'm sorry, who did I say? Who did I say?
Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry. How did I get you mixed up? Maybe it was a haircut. I had new haircuts.
Paul's my middle name.
He paused up for the name. Okay.
It's not.
So, uh, yes, yes, yes. So Felicia and, and Bob, thank you, thank you.
All right, now that we don't have a dry eye in the house. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening to give our summer programming, uh, update. Thank you for, uh, the Educational Service Team who is here, uh, tonight because a lot of these programs, um, come, uh, through the Ed Services Department just based on, uh, information that we see that is occurring in our schools in the areas of enrichment and intervention that we need to provide. And so summer, um, is a summer opportunity that is provided to our students. A lot of our opportunities are given at, uh, no cost, so. Starting with our strategic, uh, plan goal number one, as we said, that, um, we have it up here for everyone to see. And we know that, uh, strategic goal one is around, um, 90% of our students will graduate in four years and the graduation rate increasing, uh, for, uh, our students who meet requirements for either two to four-year colleges as well as military and industry-recognized credentials. We have had a, uh, some questions that have come to us in regards to the summer programming. So we're going to incorporate those questions into our presentation, uh, tonight as well. Uh, one of the things that we look at when we are, um, communicating our summer programs is, um, making sure that the information is out efficiently, effectively, and timely. So with the work of our Communications Department and Ed Services, we start advertising our summer programs in February. And we advertise from February all the way until May. So families have the opportunity to register online, uh, to, uh, participate in our programs. And we also, uh, held a Saturday registration, which was available two weeks, uh, before the actual summer school, uh, began. Uh, at the elementary level, the, this information and recruitment of the summer programs is done by our principals, our Title I Leads, our, um, counselors. All of those, uh, persons in our buildings help at the elementary level to participate, uh, to help get students who are involved in the program. And for middle school, personal phone calls are made, meetings are held with, um, students to talk about where they are. They, if they, um, if we have, um, numbers on file, we also follow up with emails as well as we also follow up with letters home to those students. To make sure that we are communicating as many viable ways that we can to get students in the programs and to meet, uh, their needs. Uh, at the high school, individual meetings are held, as well as parent meetings are also held, uh, in the evening to, um, display the different programs that we have. There is an ongoing meeting that occurs with students, especially starting, uh, at the beginning of the year, especially at the senior level. Our James Samiri and the counselors and, uh, the social worker meet with every student to talk about where they are on that graduation pathway, making sure that they have all of their credits, that they have all of their points, um, that they need for the, um, the Ohio State, uh, tests. Because as Allison pointed out, is, it is connected to their high school diploma. So it's not just, um, starting out there at the senior level, but it's making sure that those students understand, here's where we are. It also happens at the junior level and at the sophomore level and freshman level as well. So moving into our, uh, programming that, uh, we had this past year. Uh, we're going to look at it from K through five, six through eight, and then nine through 12. So at the K through five level, we're starting with Camp Invention. And Camp Invention is a summer enrichment program that is focused on what, uh, children can learn around the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It is a week-long experience, uh, that taps into the spirit of innovation for students to help them grow in those areas. Then we have a, um, intervention program known as our third-grade reading guarantee, uh, program. This is the program that focuses in on those students that we, um, basically have not reached the required promotion score for them to move on into fourth grade. And if you don't know, legislation has, um, parameters around the third-grade guarantee that if those students do not meet that grade, that they will not move on into the next grade level. Unique to Cleveland Heights is we have our Reading Matters for English Learners. This has been going on, um, for the three years, or actually four years that I've had been in the, uh, district, where we focus in on our students who are English as a second language learners, uh, helping them to extend their reading during, um, the summer. And this past summer, we had 36 students who attended the program. And 20 of those students were returned, uh, English language learners. We also had a student who was in the ninth grade and the 10th grade also come, even though we kind of focus on K through eight, but the whole family came, uh, to the program. So that's why they were there, uh, as ninth and 10th grader.
Can you tell us a little bit more about how, how often, how long, I don't, is that?
They actually go for about a month. Uh, and the summer is usually held in, uh, July. This summer, their focus was on a book called The Wild Robot by Peter Brown. And it focuses on a robot discovering that she is alone on a remote wild island with no memory of where she is from or why she is there. And her only hope for survival is to try to learn about her new environment. So we thought that would be very befitting for English language learners because they're coming into a situation where they're having a second language.
I just got to tell you, Camp Invention's amazing.
Oh, yes.
My child did go to that years ago, and he loved it.
And I did quite a few of the remediation programs.
It's okay.
I'm not kidding.
It's not yet.
We're really excited about the Camp Invention Program. It's actually a program that's run through the National Inventors Hall of Fame. And we've been continuing to try and find more ways for our students to participate. Uh, I'm really excited that this year we asked our elementary building principals to see if they had any leftover funds that they could provide scholarships. And we were able to scholarship some of our own students into this. And we do have some district staff where, that will bring their children to participate in this program. And there is the thought like, how do we continue to grow this and make, um, Cleveland Heights a hub for Camp Invention in this, this region? So, uh, they do run it in lots of different districts, but it is something that has been a presence here in Cleveland Heights. Uh, we did have a year where we did not, uh, run the camp, and that was mainly because of transitions, uh, in leadership, and it just kind of slipped through the cracks. But we're really excited to bring it back and think about how do we increase the opportunities for students to participate.
And I hope that we send notices out to every private charter school child or, you know, and invite them to attend.
They have to get educated somewhere.
I think it's an awesome program.
So one of the other camps that we run for our elementary students is the I'm Going To Camps. And, uh, these really are to help students prepare for the upcoming school year. So, uh, in opposition to some of the camps that were shown on the previous slide, the I'm Going To Camps are really the, a precursor to the beginning of the school year. So the intent here is to start at the end of July, move through, um, August. And as students complete those camps, they are right, ready to be back into the school mode. So, um, I know there's a lot of research that talks about the summer slide, and how do we make sure that students are prepared? The I'm Going To Camps really are, um, camps that we use some of our Title, Title I dollars in order to run those camps as a precursor to the school year. So we do run those and, um, students coming in for kindergarten. This year, we had a really great partnership with, um, Family Connections. So there was an opportunity for the Family Connections rep to, to reach out. We got a chance to really meet some of those families and welcome them to the district. As I believe that there were several families that reached out to me specifically that are, were new to the district, were excited to hear about the, the orientation program through the I'm Going To Kindergarten Camp. And we're excited to get their students in before the beginning of school year. So we also see that we had that in first grade and second grade. Uh, the kindergarten camp really helps build those kindergarten readiness skills. Um, as Ms. Byrd had talked about, um, we assess those skills, um, very early on in the school year. So it's another one of those measures that we're trying to help students prepare and feel ready for those assessments. Um, and also just understand what the environment of a school looks like. So, uh, we have housed these, um, last year they were in different buildings, but this year we centralized it to Boulevard, so we provided transportation. Uh, we picked up students from their home school area, and then they moved to Boulevard where we could have, um, a centralized resource for all of the students. We had multiple classrooms going for each one of these grade levels. Uh, and that allowed for teacher collaboration, they could share, they could problem solve, and they can really create a welcoming environment for students participating in the camp.
And we're also providing, uh, breakfast and lunch at all of our programs as well.
So some of our programming for grade six through 12, uh, include, um, the Algebra Bridge Program, the Explore Your Future Program, and the Middle School Summer School Program. This was the first year that we offered the Algebra Bridge Program. And the intent of this program is to help students move from on-grade level, seventh grade math, to hopefully Algebra One in their eighth grade year. So it's really meant to be that bump up. Being the first year that we have offered this program, um, we had a decent number of students. We had about 23 students participate in this program. Um, I think that after the program was over, we did recommend some of the students to move. move right into algebra. But one of the things that I think will happen as we continue to run this program is we're going to see those numbers increase. We're going to really be able to target the, the right students to participate in this class. But just as we're thinking about enrichment, the best quote that I heard is, after the school year began, I talked to a student who participated in the Algebra Bridge Program, and they said, "It's amazing. I feel like even though I'm not in algebra, I got an understanding, and I know exactly how to be successful in math." And they were talking about, you know, some of that is just confidence. Do you know what you're going to see once the school year starts? And I think that if we looked at that long-term trajectory for even that specific student, we would see that their math scores start to increase, just because of the confidence of gaining a chance to preview some of the materials, getting a chance to see their teacher in a different light before the school year starts. And I'm really excited to say that the teachers thought that this curriculum was really hands-on and engaging. So it actually, this, this question, even though this is a fourth-grade standard, you can see that there's algebra in this. And a lot of the simulations and the projects and the activities students were doing in the Algebra Bridge Program, asked them to do problem-solving like this. It's not about the right answer, it's which answer seems to be the best answer. Which one did you create? And so they were doing things like, I'm trying to make T-shirts and sell T-shirts, and what's your profit? And so it's really meant to be a more hands-on approach to algebra. And that actually, that curriculum, I'm happy to say, is, comes straight from the Avid program, that is, the Avid Summer Bridge Algebra Curriculum. And so we've, it helps with our training of teachers in the algebra, in the mathematics courses to use Avid strategies and embed that into their curriculum. We also see the Explore Your Future. That was the first time we had run the Explore Your Future Program. This was a program to ask sixth through eighth graders or ninth and tenth graders to gain some exposure with our CTE programs. So these were programs run by our high school career tech teachers as a precursor to the more formal two-year programs that the students can have access to in their tenth-grade year. So we're trying to build some capacity, we're trying to get students involved, trying to see, you know, what does it look like to be underneath the car? Have the car over you, take a look at underneath, and see what that looks like. And so it was really hands-on. A lot of the students who participated were current seventh graders that are now, I guess they're current eighth graders now. But last year, they were seventh graders, and they participated through our federal grant that we received, the Federal Gear Up Grant. So we had a full summer of programming that included field trips and experiences and talking about careers and job shadowing people and going on trips. And we even had some of our parents go on trips with our students, whether it was academic and going to a university, or it was going to the Natural History Museum and just seeing what that looks like and experiencing program there. So we tried to partner those, and it was a really positive experience for the students who participated through the Gear Up program. And then you see a little bit more of the more traditional programming. We see our Middle School Summer School, which is geared towards students in grade six through eight who need additional support in order to have the prerequisite skills needed to meet grade-level standards in the core subject areas of math, ELA, science, and social studies. And this does go back to gathering all the data that comes out in our 2018 report card. We, we start to notice where students are, based on their performance with district assessments, based on their progress with grades, how are they doing on state assessments? So a lot of times, we'll embed our interventions in middle school or high school programming to try and make sure students are progressing on track to meet those requirements. This year, we had the largest number of students in, in recent memory participate in the middle school program. And some of it is because students are assigned. In order to move forward, we say that students need to attend summer school, build those skills. But at the same time, we also have students who are trying to take advantage of opportunities to enrich. So some students that may not have been satisfied with their grades, they could go ahead and take another opportunity, get some initial exposure before they go into an upper-level course. So there's just an opportunity for enrichment as well. But the majority of it is really based on trying to remediate some of the concerns we have for students and their access of content knowledge.
Bob, this is with a teacher, traditional classroom setting. This isn't Credit Recovery Online or something like that.
No, it is not. Our middle school program is, it is, you have a teacher, you're working through some of it, some of the concerns from the previous grade year, grade level. A lot of times, it's the, the same classroom teacher, so they even know the students, they've built those relationships, and they're able to remediate. So sometimes I think of it more as four additional weeks of instruction with students you already know. So what would happen to students' achievement if you got a little bit more time to continue to work with them? Which is a little bit different than our high school credit recovery, where we start getting to those Carnegie units and those credits, and we really want to try and make sure students get through curriculum in order to earn passing grades. The middle school program is not like that. Even I know in the ELA section, a lot of it is, they'll do some of their summer reading with the students in summer school to make sure that they're prepared, and they've completed some of the summer reading. So that way, students are not at a deficit when they start the school year. So if you move to the, next one, right? So there are the high school programs, nine through 12. Again, we've got some enrichment pieces with the AP Success Camp. I believe that this is our fourth year running some version of the AP Success Camp. And this is really meant to be a precursor to students who are preparing to take some of our most rigorous courses. I think that the AP component really makes you think that next semester, they're going to take an AP course. But we did have many students that are coming into honors courses for the first time at the high school, and they are, they were interested, and they signed up for this course. So we did have students nine through eleven. Did we have twelve? Nine through 12 at the camp. Yes, exactly. Mrs. Gould, and I know, because we were part of the Teaching Corps for AP Success Camp. So we were there every morning with Mr. Fisher and some of the AP teachers who led workshop sessions with the students. But really, this is meant to try and prepare students for some of those rigorous courses that they're going to take. So we do focus a lot on time management. We talk about, how do you pool your resources? What does it look like to have a study group and a successful study group, not just a social study group, that is going to help you alleviate some of the pressure that comes about with a really challenging course? So we did talk about study habits, we talked about time management, we even talked about stress relief. So what does it look like to have this huge stress? And thinking about how your time has to be managed almost to the minute to feel that you can have a social life, and then how do you relieve some of that stress? So I think that, you know, we want to make sure that this is just the first touch of having a year-long worth of support for our students, and it continues with our EOS work at the high school, with how do we make sure that our teachers understand some of the, the constraints that students feel? But we also want to provide ongoing support, whether it's academic, social, emotional, for our students that are in the AP courses.
If I could interject really.
Sure.
My son was involved in the AP Success Camp this summer, as you know. And he, I can tell you that there are two study groups that he is part of. So these, these lessons that you're talking about, and the importance that you're talking about, definitely did impact. I really think, and I've talked to Bob about this, that in the future, I think we, we would get a larger turnout if we offered more than one week, because it's summer, and I know for certain, a number of those families were just traveling that week. So if we had two choices, I think we'd get more students. And, you know, and you mentioned the stress piece, and I think that that is a really important piece, you know? Everyone here knows that, you know, we had to make a very hard decision. We pulled my son out of Symphonic Winds and Marching Band because of the rigor of his academics. And, you know, I was involved in vocal music from fifth grade through 12th grade in this district. My wife was involved in instrumental music. That was a heartbreaking decision for us. But the saxophone isn't going to get my son into college. And it wasn't worth the stress that he was feeling early on in the school year. So I do think that we need to, and I appreciate the sincere work that you're doing. I think that we, as a district, also need to sort of look inside and revisit the study hall policy at the high school moving forward, so that we can support our kids who just have a lot going on. And, and, you know, it's, it's, all kids bring a different dynamic. Some kids, you know, home is just not conducive to doing work, and we need to acknowledge that, say it out loud, and build time into their day while they're under our roof. I think we could serve our kids with, with that conversation moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's definitely something that is needed as we, it doesn't seem like there's anything ever coming off the plate, right? Especially, we can feel that when we hear about our data conversation, it's just always, get a bigger plate.
We're going to need a bigger boat.
Now we get to teach for two weeks.
Yeah, exactly. But just to the point of trying to find a good week for the AP Success Camp, that's when we try to think about when the sports start, when, you know, how far into the summer do we, do we let the school year clear? And then how quickly does it start to gear back up again? So we did try to back it up a little bit to avoid some of the athletic programs, but I think that we can definitely take into consideration, like, so what's a, a better time? Because I think we want to stay away from the, the athletics, but we also want to continue to maybe have multiple opportunities for students to, to come through.
That'd be great.
And then we just need some staff to, you know, the earlier we can communicate the expectation of the camp's going to happen, then they can think about participation as well. Even though I'm sure that they loved having us there.
Of course. We still follow them.
We should. So we also have the OST Summer School and the High School Summer School. And even though these are two separate bullet points, they really go together for many of the reasons that you had heard about earlier tonight, that this really is our high school diploma, this is our state test, this is students earning the required number of points to graduate. And it really is students that, I mean, we're talking about, you either can move on past high school, or you can't, based on these two components. Do you have enough credit? Do you have the, the number of testing points in order to graduate? Or are you in the right courses in order to earn one of those alternative pathways for graduation? So you see that there's a lot of students that are participating in our OST, because they know that they're short on where they, the state is requiring them to be for the graduation points. And we did try to provide intervention. I know that under the old system with the OGT, there was a required ten hours of intervention before a student could sit for the, their next round of OGT. That is not the case, that's written into the law for OST, so, but we know that a student is not going to be successful without getting some review, or what does it look like to talk about these concepts? I know many of the members of the instructional team have put together tremendous resources for students to be able to access online at their pace in order to review for the OST. So we really are trying to make sure that we are pushing students forward and providing resources for them to try and get those required graduation points. And then you see the High School Summer School is also an option there. And our High School Summer School is Credit Recovery. So that is through our online platform of Edgenuity. That's what we're moving forward with right now. And then there was one other question that came up, is what about students' opportunity to take courses for the first time in summer school? And so we do offer students to be able to take health and PE in the summer for original credit. So that is not something where they had to have failed it the first time in order to take it in the summer. We know that that frees up a space in student schedules to get that requirement out of, kind of out of the way in the summertime, in addition to all of the opportunities that exist for students with earning a credit flex. But usually, they'll even complete some of their coursework in the summertime with that, in order to remove some of those requirements for graduation. So that does take place, students can take health and PE in the summer. We will continue to offer that as an option for our students and at the high school level.
Thank you.
So what did our summer program student participation actually look like? Here are the numbers for Camp Invention, twenty-two students. We held a arts camp at Oxford, eight students were participating. I'm, I'm Going To, we have kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, with twenty-five students at kindergarten, twenty-four at first grade, thirty-three at second grade. Then our Reading Matters, which was our EL program, had thirty-five students. Our Middle School Bridge Program, again, that was supported through Gear Up, was twenty-two students. Explore Your Future, again, we were piloting that program, that was for sixth through eight and nine through ten, around CTE, eight students. Middle School Summer School, two-hundred-and-fifty-three, High School Summer School, three-ninety-five. Our APA, AP Success Camp, twenty-two and two-hundred-and-one students participating in our OST Summer Prep and Testing Program.
So, I mean, some of these numbers are really very, I mean, they show the success of the programs. I mean, when you look at the middle school and the high school and the OST, I mean, it's, it's concerning, though, you're, and you've got these phenomenal programs, and we hear about them. I mean, I'll, I'll focus on the AP Success Camp, but I know the other ones are, is sort of at the same caliber. I mean, what can we do to attract more kids to these? I mean, it's a question that I know cannot be answered right now, but I think that's a question that we need to ask ourselves, and, you know, maybe leverage our communications department, and start thinking creative, you know, creatively about how we can get some of these numbers up. I mean, this, these are resources that our kids can take advantage of that will increase their academic achievements. So what can we do to, to honor that?
Can I also ask with the, particularly middle school and high school? So a student, you know, Sam takes two classes.
Yes.
Takes math and language arts. Is Sam counted twice in that two-fifty-three, or is Sam one student overall? Or is he one stu-, you, you see what I'm saying?
For middle school, it is one student overall. The high school numbers there are the ones that just participated in the summer school and then OST, but they could have been in more, yes.
Got it.
But middle school is just the actual number.
And I think, to get to your point, Jim, one of the reasons that the team decided to, to focus on enrichment programs was to get away from that notion that summer school is just for remedial. So, so it's a way to get a head start. And I think there, we're doing a, a good job, we're going to do a better job advertising that and get the parents to see that this is a wonderful learning opportunity with your teachers that you may know. Get a head start. And so I think it's just changing that narrative about what summer school is all about, and getting, you know, get kids more excited about a, a, a summer experience that, that could be fun, I know it's fun, and give them a head start. But I think we're on, to your point, we're on the right track with that.
And, and do you find the, our elementary, our elementary buildings that don't have air conditioning? I mean, I think you did something at Boulevard, so I think there's sections at Boulevard that are cooled.
Yes.
I mean, are there, I mean, I mean, do you find the, the AC being an issue?
We just really wanted to just have all the students at one site, instead of having them all at the different school buildings. We weren't maximizing our resources by having them all there, because you may have had so many kids that came to a Fairfax building and not. So we just decided to put all of the students at one building, and we provided transportation. And like I said, we gave them breakfast and lunch at the building as well.
Okay.
And let's see, most of the programs are at low cost, or at low cost. So are they, like, grant, did you guys apply for grants to operate these programs? And what's the future of these for next summer? For the funding, that is.
Funding is always interesting. Most of the programs, well, let me say that I'm Going To camps are written into elementary school buildings, building plans. So they fund those through Title I grants. Our Middle School Algebra Bridge Program, that is helped through our Gear Up grant. The EL program comes from our Title III monies that we get from the state. And a lot of the other programs that we have are general fund and parents paying a minimal cost for their, their kids to participate in. I think the, the most expensive program is Camp Invention, which is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I think you guys are doing great stuff. I love the summer programming. I love trying to change the narrative that summer school isn't just for kids for remedial kind of learning. I love the idea of making it fun, and I really want to see these numbers grow.
So just thinking about- So just thinking about our, our summer programming and looking at next steps, we always want to evaluate where our summer programming is and do we need to offer something else? If there's something of a different interest, uh, for students? So we're always looking at, um, the number of participants that we have, the cost that it is, uh, for the district. Um, how do we, especially for our, uh, high school programs, we're looking definitely at graduation. Are they recovering credits? You know, how many kids after we've given the test have passed and earned their points? So we look at all of those when we are evaluating and monitoring our programs. We definitely want to, uh, provide more enrichments, um, getting away from the narrative of the remediation and see even if we do have to do, uh, intervention, at what level is it needed? Um, so that we're just not doing a, a blanket overall, uh, intervention. Also looking at our current programs that are in school and how are they preparing our students to graduate on time? Do we need to add an extension to some of those programs as well? And then we want to extend our programs to start looking at transitions. Students that are transitioning from fifth to sixth, eight to nine, uh, those type of things. So those are some of the next steps that we're working on and add services.
Do you have a general sense or are trend, numbers trending up for summer programming or are they staying flat? Are they going down or do we not know?
No, these are, our programs have increased. I mean, this is actually, um, some of the bigger numbers that we've had. I think one, our high school summer school is, is larger than it's ever been because of the, the need to have students take additional OST tests. This is the biggest year that we've had our middle school programs. And I think some of that is just counselors and teachers helping students know in order to be successful at the next level, this is what you need. Um, so it's really more about trying to, again, extend some of that learning opportunity and say like, this is just critical for you to know in order to be successful at the next grade level. Um, and as you think about, um, you know, us trying to implement some of these new programs, um, this is definitely a bigger year than the last two years at the I'm Going To Camps. Um, because we've gotten that out in front of parents. We've, um, helped make it an expectation at the building. So we know whether or not you have two students at Roxborough or four students at Canterbury. When they all come together, it's not such a big burden for the individual school to bear. So we've seen the larger numbers in that program as well.
And especially at the elementary level, giving, uh, parents another opportunity instead of their student being retained. Uh, the student assistance teams are recommending them to attend the summer program and then allowing those students then to be tested at the end of the program.
I also love the fact that it builds a social connection of families across the district when all the kids are together at one location for a program like that. I think that's fantastic, especially in a younger grade where you might not meet kids in other schools until you get to middle school. Or high school in some cases.
And there, uh, one of the things that we did and, uh, we've done it for the last two years is in February, I believe that the Parenting Magazine comes out with a list of all of the, um, summer programs. So we're also been trying to make sure our programs are in line. So as families are making those decisions about summer plans and vacations, that they can also allocate some time for our summer program. Uh, we've also been, um, advertising many other programs that are outside of the district. We've been, um, talking about or partnering with the, the city. So they advertise their programs right there along with, uh, some of the programs that we offer academic to talk about the enrichment. We know that the Reaching Heights Music Camp is always, uh, one of those primary things that we have in the district to support our students. So, you know, as much as we want to, um, highlight the academic programs and intervention and enrichment programs, there's such a plethora of other enrichment programs that are offered just outside of Cleveland Heights. It's not something done by the school, but there's a lot of community resources that, um, offer tremendous programming. Um, and again, usually at low or no cost to students and families. So, uh, we love that those are right there in our program guide, um, to say if you want to go to a soccer camp, um, you know, here it is, here's the information. So, um, there's a lot of opportunities for our students in the summer.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Long nights, but great nights.
Um, I want to have a quick conversation about, um, an email you shared with us today, Dan, about the, uh, conflict that we have with the work session and the open house.
Yes.
So, um, and I think there were some questions that you asked that you got back to us on. I have not looked at that.
So, um, I was so happy to learn about the community open houses. Um, I have said for quite a while that we have such an amazing story to tell and that we just need to keep finding new people to tell our story to and in as many different ways as we can. And, um, I, I'm, so, so I was so excited to, to learn that we are having community open houses at pretty much all of our buildings. Um, and, uh, when I, the members of the board know that pretty much the instant I saw that, I sent out a text to the members of the board saying, hey, we need to buy into this. We need to be present at this. Our community needs to see us holding the door on their way in. Really, I believe that. Um, and, um, and of course, my, my colleagues on the board, my amazing colleagues on the board jumped on the wagon immediately and said, oh, heck yes. So, um, as I was, you know, punching the dates into my phone, um, I just noticed that unfortunately there, there's actually one of the nights that two buildings are open, we're gonna be here.
Canterbury and Heights High?
Yeah.
Or no?
No, not Heights, Heights, yeah, yeah, the, the middle school. So it just sort of struck me as, as unfortunate. I don't know if there's anything we can really do about it. Um, but then to follow up on the second piece, I was curious about, you know, uh, how we are reaching out to the families. The families who use us know us. But often the families who don't, don't know what they're missing. And, um, I think it's really important that we find a way to expand our, our marketing reach uh, to those, to include those families who are not using us and even the families who don't have kids. Because they're paying for this and they should come in and see what their money's getting them. And so I, I asked for some information and, um, Scott replied with, um, uh, an incredibly impressive plan, marketing plan for this, which doesn't surprise me at all that it's as impressive as it is because you know Scott and you're not surprised by that. But boy, was I thrilled at, um, the, uh, partners that we have and that, that we are using to make sure that the families who are not using us are still getting notified. So bravo.
So the million dollar question is, um, do we want to move our work session?
I would love for us to be present at every door. I, I think that it's when people who do not use our schools take the time to come to visit one of our buildings because we've asked, we've asked them to. And they are literally greeted at the door by elected members of the Board of Education. I think that will matter. Maybe I'm flattering myself.
That's the budget presentation? So we can, we can move it.
Are we starting at seven that night? I know the open houses are six to eight. Are we starting our meeting at seven?
Well, or if we left a little bit, if we left a little bit later, okay, so we're not, we're holding the door open, but we may not be letting.
Locking it, right. That's what I'm thinking.
I'm game if we want to start late.
Yep, we can move it to the twenty.
Stop at Starbucks on the way.
Twenty-third.
Well, why don't we go, okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't, okay, so we need to have Molly up, you know, weigh in on this, okay? So why don't we, um, okay, so.
And we're gonna run in the same thing, the open house for Gary's on the 23rd.
Okay, we'll send a note out with just kind of some dates.
I would be okay with, I mean, I know we need to discuss this with Molly, but I would be okay with, I can be at one of the open houses at six. I wouldn't be there till eight. I would come for the first half hour, 45 minutes and then head over. I don't know if anybody else, if that's an option for them.
You name it, I'll be there.
Okay, so let's do this. So we have a, I mean, we're having an agenda setting meeting on Friday morning, you and I and Dr. Dixon. So why don't we talk to Molly in the meantime? Do you have concerns, thoughts on this?
I'll, I'll attend. Um, just you all just let me know, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, so we'll figure it out. Cause we have, we have plenty of time to notice it, so.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I, I think moving it to the 23rd, we just create another conflict with another open. You know, now it's one building instead of two and we've got two, but there are five of us and we can probably divide and conquer and be there at least for the beginnings of some of these.
And then we can always move it up to six o'clock because that particular beat is just one agenda item and that is, um, the budget presentation.
Okay.
Paige Turner.
Scott's, Scott's on the hot seat that night.
Totally exciting.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun. You gotta see the presentation. It's gonna be totally fun.
Not one of those dry meetings, right?
Nope.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's, we have to, um, we have a lot of people here that need to go home. So, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
You want to call the vote? Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh? Yes. Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serena?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, members of the staff. Thank you for your late night.